Let's get started. I should tell you that some of the questions you're going to get are this pretty much the same as the ones in the second district and some of them are going to be different. I'm not quite sure. The first question is the same. The office that you seek requires an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California. And people have different views of what that Constitution means. What does the Constitution mean to you? I'm going to start with Mr. Cruz.
Check three. Vote for me, District One. Cruzito Herrera Cruz, I am a constitutionalist. I've been a constitutionalist all my life. We as the people derive our power from this pocket part Constitution. I'll probably be the only candidate that carries a Constitution with me in my binder as a constitutionalist. The principle of equalitarianism I've used in my past elections. What does that mean? Equalitarianism is that everybody's treated under Santa Barbara law equally. As a constitutionalist, I fought for voting rights when it was an at-large system and we needed representation. This was my dream come true. The people standing here representing being civic contribution, public stewards, giving back to the fabric of our community. That was the essence of my dream. Thank you for feeling it. Thank you. Gracias. And in that sense, as a constitutionalist, most that we treat those that don't have the public good, public service, we need to protect them. That's the value of our community.
Thank you, Ms. Santa Maria. Go this way, this question.
Thank you so much, and thank you to everyone that has been involved in putting this forum together. My name is Wendy Santa Maria, and I 100% aim to protect the people that the Constitution aims to represent. And I firmly believe that that includes every single person in our jurisdiction, in the city of Santa Barbara in particular, everyone that lives in our city limits. And for me specifically, thanks to Mr. Cruz that we have district elections. My focus is of course on the east side, but also the city overall. In a city like this, there is such beautiful diversity, and I want to make sure that we preserve that and that we create a community that allows this diversity to thrive. My goal is to make Santa Barbara a place where local families can grow up here, they can raise their children, the folks that keep our city running are actually able to afford to live in the city they serve. Regardless of their race, gender, age, where they were born, where they're from, if you're contributing to this city, I highly believe that you deserve a safe, affordable home. You deserve safe streets. A lot of this is basic, right? But this is what our tax dollars are going to, and my goal as your next city council member is to ensure that the taxes that we pay from our hard-earned paychecks are truly going to yielding the results that we're asking for. Safe homes, safe streets, increased public safety, and a better Santa Barbara.
Thank you. If you could pause for 30 seconds, I've got a note. I have noticed that I have forgotten to let you guys give opening statements. So how about this? We continue with this question, then you give the opening statements. That'll work? Ms. Gutierrez.
So the Constitution, it definitely is a representation of all American values, but most importantly, I think the Constitution really holds those people in power to have a balance. It really has detailed values and rules of how to keep people in power like us accountable. It also, it's a living document, and within that living document, I think it's, as citizens and as people in leadership, we have to continue fighting to protect that document. And an example of that is the Equal Rights Amendment, and an example of that is the Roy versus Wade. And so I think that the Constitution is really our base on how do we, how we create policy, but also the balance between policy and justice.
Thank you. Mr. Becerra. I would say that the writers of the Constitution are a lot smarter than me, and they understood the process of how government works and how we make mistakes, and they made it so it was a growing, it was a living document, and we need to remember that because sometimes we get into this course of we think this is right, but we really need to change directions and adjust. And so that's a great aspect of the Constitution, but I know that one of the most important things is for us to protect our citizens. So focusing on public safety is a must, giving our public servants all the resources they need to do their job to do the best job, and they have the best in this community. I think that's a huge key. So I think it's a process for us to deal with this if I'm elected, is looking at that and see how we can apply it best for our local government. Thank you.
And Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you very much. I am proud to say that I've taken that oath three times in my life. The first time was when I worked for the Carpinteria City Hall as the broadcaster, and I was in charge of making sure that the people of Carpinteria had access to the government meetings that were making the decisions in their community, and I was very proud of that. Then I've taken it two times since taking office as well. And it's one of the three most memorable moments of my life because it's also the same oath that our first responders take, our police officers and our firefighters. And it's something really humbling and relatable when you take that oath and you know that they're taking the same oath as well. And I've shown my dedication to the Constitution when we were getting an influx of racist public commenters that were calling in virtually, and some of my colleagues wanted to limit virtual access to our meetings because of that. And I protested against it. I didn't, even though I didn't agree with what those people were calling, I was not going to infringe on their right for them to say it. So I uphold the Constitution. I've been doing it for well over 10 years now, 20 years, and I will keep doing it.
Thank you. And now again with my apologies, opening statements, I think we'll start going the other way, starting with Mr. Gutierrez and ending with Mr. Cruz. Just an opening statement, two minutes to say what you want.
Thank you very much. I'm Santa Barbara City Council Member, Oscar Gutierrez, and I'm looking for your support and your vote for my reelection to the third district seat. I've been, I worked really hard to become the most responsive and accessible city council member in our city's history, and I will continue to do that. I've only voted to make sure that our first responders are taken care of. I've made sure that our infrastructure is being upgraded and maintained, and it's already been planned for the future. So I'm proud of that. I've also been very passionate in making sure of giving the youth access to open play areas like their school campuses and parks by making sure that we allocated funding and resources to making sure that it was safe for them to do so. And I will continue to do so when reelected, and also protecting people's ability to participate virtually in our meetings so that they have access to the meetings that we conduct that affect the city and the laws that we follow. I want to make sure that everybody knows that we're being as transparent as possible and making sure that we have access to our meetings and us elected is pivotal to that, and I will keep upholding that when reelected. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Becerra.
Not Italian, so. So I'm a Santa Barbara local native, born and raised, family man, father of three, a business owner, a community servant. I've been involved with so many different nonprofits and community service organizations in Santa Barbara my whole adult life. Even when I was a young kid, you know, growing up at La Casa de la Raza with my family members volunteering there all the time. I was stuck there a lot of times, but I learned a lot over the years. And what I'm finding myself now in a situation where I need to stand up for our people on the west side, you know, be able to give them the services they need, the services are lacking, open space for the kids to play, better streets, safer sidewalks, better lighting, just the overall feel of what's not happening now. And so that was why I entered this race, to really stand up for our community, you know, being that I have a martial arts school on the west side, and I'm like the downtown center of it. The parents sit in my lobby and they talk. And so over the years, you know, I've been on the west side for 28 years, so it's not like it's just one generation, it's multiple generations that have been a part of. And I find that they come to me on the regular, they trust me, they know that I get things done when I put my mind to it, you know, with a lot of the organizations that I run are successful because of my input. And I want to take that experience and bring it to Santa Barbara, to our city council, to be able to move things forward. I'm able to bring private sector and nonprofits and contributors to be together, to get things solved, to get money going where it needs to go, and to bring the people together. Right now, it's just a matter of uniting in Santa Barbara. We're so divided, and my goal is to bring us together, move forward in the direction with a vision, with hope, and I think I can do that. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gutierrez.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for coming. My name is Alejandro Gutierrez. I'm currently your first district city council, and I'm running for reelection because I want to finish what I started. I'm local as well. I was born and raised here, went through the public school system. I, my background's in education, and I've worked for the school district a little over 20 years. And I've been a public servant in my community. The reason that I won the first time was because I was very well-known in the community. And those eight votes really reflected that the power that the individuals in my district had. And so it was a huge win for the community when I got elected, and it was also a huge win for those like Cruzito Cruz that participated in forming district elections because I am a product of what district elections was all about, to really voice the locals' values and their issues, and putting the people's concerns first instead of political agendas or outside opinions from the district. I have always been known to bring to building community. I never left. I understand the dynamics of the city, but most importantly, right now, since we are living in, we have a housing crisis, and we also have a lot of division than ever in our city. For the first time, and I'm 41, I've never seen teachers almost going on to strike. And so there's a lot of tension in the community. And in order to be able to address the housing crisis issue that we have in the city, we cannot divide, we cannot put political agendas before the people's need, and we need to bring everyone to the table, from finance institutions, from renters to property owners to developers and to government agencies, from local state and from state and local. And so we need to build community to get out of our problems.
Thank you. Ms. Santa Maria.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Wendy Santa Maria, and I am one of your candidates for Santa Barbara City Council in District One. I entered this race after a few years of local community members asking me to. And more importantly, I entered this race after years of working with the community to advance the interest of working families, whether or not we had a majority support in our city council. And running for office is a lot of hard work, but it's so worth it when the community that I've been working with for years gives me so much hope and gives me such a big push to say, go for it, you can do this. And in my years in advocating for working families here, I started doing that because that's just who I am. I also live paycheck to paycheck. I'm a renter. I understand the dynamics of renting from the open market, and I understand the dire need of working families who simply cannot afford to live in the city they serve. Our housing crisis is putting a major strain, especially on small businesses, who can't afford to retain a reliant workforce. We are seeing families have to uproot their children because they can no longer afford to live in the place that they were growing up in at first. And in order for us to preserve our local community, we must address the root causes of this housing crisis. And one solution won't be a catch-all, it won't solve the whole thing. We need to approach this from a collaborative perspective in which we bring in all of the stakeholders to the table. Because at the end of the day, we need to look at what is most popular in our city. And right now, what the community has overwhelmingly been asking for is for a stop to the bleeding of families that we're seeing in Santa Barbara. We want investments in our community. We want investments in public infrastructure. We want a representative who will show up, and that's who I'll be for you.
Thank you. And Mr. Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Shane Stark. Well, the public in Santa Barbara might not know I'm running. I've been censored from this political campaign. Here on August 28th, Hat Freud, Joshua Malina, Jerry Roberts censored me. I wasn't at that TV Santa Barbara forum. The Independent has censored me. This is a candidate forum with two candidates. Where's my face? I've run hard. It's difficult to run in Santa Barbara with a shoestring campaign. The Independent has censored me. Why isn't my face there? Again, we've got to be careful. Santa Barbara Talks with Joshua Malina interviewed this young lady, Santa Barbara Talks, on 5/11. On 5/18, her campaign kicked off at Ortega Park. Her number is a 951. It's a Riverside number. It's called a transplant. And then she registered to vote where she lives now on May 31st. So you have Joshua Malina interviewing a candidate that's not even registered in District One. That's tough. Good afternoon. Buenas tardes. Yo me llamo Cruzito Herrera Cruz. My name is Cruzito Herrera Cruz. I was born and raised in this community. I went to Las Flores preschool, I went to Menorah School, I went to Adams, La Cumbre Junior High, Santa Barbara High School, Golden Tornadoes. Then I transferred to Santa Barbara High School where I took the oath with Peter McDougall and the Board of Trustees as a student trustee. Back in the 90s, I transferred over to UCSB in political, I was a business administration major at UCSB because I wanted to do economics and be a CPA. But my politics have changed, and I went over to UCSB, Political Science and Chicago Studies, Santa Barbara College of Law. Last 20 years, I've been an income tax preparer certified by the IRS. And so I want to use my fiscal conservatism to apply my audit skills with the IRS, the franchise tax board, and apply those skills that I have saved many taxpayers in my district thousands of thousands of dollars because I do good service. So I appreciate the conversation, and vote for Cruzito Herrera Cruz, District One.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next question, I think we'll go to, well, we might as well ask the rent control question. I have one rent control question. It's the same question I asked the second district candidate. Do you favor regulation on residential rents beyond current state laws, otherwise known as rent control? If so, how do you propose to give owners due process and a fair return? If not, how do you propose to achieve affordable rental housing in the city? And I think we should start with, I'll start with the first district candidate, starting with Ms. Gutierrez and ending with Mr. Cruz, and then go with the third district candidate. We'll start with Mr. Becerra and then end with Mr. Gutierrez. That clear enough? Go ahead.
Thank you for that question. It is definitely a hot topic. I have been very vocal about, I don't think rent control, rent cap, rent stabilization is the answer to our housing crisis. It is unsustainable. Right now, there is an influx, there's, with high insurance prices, there's cancellations in home insurance, especially in this area that it's a flood zone, fire zone. You also have inflation, so property owners to be able to keep up and maintain their properties is a challenge right now, especially if you are in a stable income. We have a lot of seniors that live in our community that their houses is basically their retirement home. And it is a Band-Aid solution, it is only temporary. Every city in the state of California where rent control has been implemented hasn't solved their housing crisis. It has unintentional consequences. In theory, it sounds great, but when you put it in practice, it's not the solution. Neighborhoods get gentrified really quickly. People stop investing in their properties, investors stop investing in the cities. The first people to move out in, out of those cities that have rent cap are people of color and...
You can finish your sentence.
It caught me off guard. I think we need to find a better holistic solution to our housing problem, and that is bringing everybody to the table.
Thank you.
Ms. Santa Maria.
Thank you. I have been organizing with our community for years on implementing a local stabilizing measure for rents because the current cap that exists at the state level is a temporary anti-price gouging mechanism. It was implemented during COVID, and it's set to expire in 2030. We have less than six years left until there is zero restriction on how much rents can go up. And now for your average corporate landlord, that sounds like a dream come true because you can up the rents as much as you want. But I'm looking out for the families. You know, most folks don't have a wage increase that is even 10% what it is, what the rent cap is now. We are seeing a massive amount of people of color already exiting our city, and there is no local rent cap. And so to say that rent cap is the thing that's going to gentrify our neighborhoods is highly misleading because it also can't be a catch-all policy. The policy that we have been advocating for has a lot of nuance because there are so many different sectors. So it would implement caps on for rent increases for the big property management companies, but it would also have a rent board in which that would serve as the place for an appeals process. So that way, when small mom and pop landlords are going through a financial, you know, distressful solution or situation, they are able to come to that board and say, we need to raise the rents past that limit for X amount of time. And we need to be flexible in order for us to be able to protect our small mom and pops, but also protect renters.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz.
I think if we look at what's going to happen in the state with Prop 33, it's going to repeal the Cos-Hawkins Act. And by repealing that rent control and the 5% cap that it has now, which has limited cities from creating a more protective measure for renters, renters create 65% of the population in District One and the majority of the population in the city. Majority of the renters in the city are Santa Barbaraans. So if we have to have tenant protection like in 2019 with the 5% cap, well, state law is a preemption where in Santa Barbara, because we're a charter city, there's home rule. So we have to have current tenant protections because the current protections that we have don't go far enough to protect the renters. This would improve the homelessness crisis by preventing evictions of the low-income, extremely low-income individuals in the community. We have to really consider codifying municipal law to right to return. For anyone that is evicted for renovations, they have a right to return stipulated through a tenant administration through our city to govern and protect the citizens of Santa Barbara. Again, we have to have negotiations and create tenant covenants with the landlords and negotiate. In lieu of not having affordable housing, we could have in a fee that can go to the local trust fund permanently. Again, this is a contract and rental agreements that we can work together with the landlords and renters.
Thank you.
Cubo.
Yes, Mr. Becerra.
Okay. So, excuse me, I'm against rent control. I think rent control, well, as I stated in the last forum I was in, is, it just doesn't work. We haven't seen anywhere where it really works and where they claim it works. It's some of the worst living environments you can be in, you know, the, it creates unintended consequences, as my partner here says, or, sorry, my partner. So the thing is, is that it, some of the, what it creates is just, it creates some slums. It creates people that invested in their properties no longer can upkeep them. It makes, it scares away new investors because how we, we talk about getting people to come in and invest, how are you going to get them to invest if they know that they can't break them in on their, on their investments? So we've got to look at the big picture. The big picture is, yes, we need to protect our tenants. Yes, I'm a renter. I don't own a property. So as I'm going through, I'm, you know, I was evicted during COVID and had to move out of town for a while. So the idea is that working my way back was tough, but you know, we're back, and the idea is that we have to fight for tenants' rights, but at the same time, we've got to be realistic about how it affects us. And overall, it doesn't work, and we haven't seen it work. And the example I used with Argentina is that once they got rid of rent control, prices came down and the market opened up. So, and we see that trend now. We see more vacancies right now, and the market is doing an adjustment. And that's just the reality of being in Santa Barbara. It's tough, but we can make it work.
Mr. Becerra.
Thank you, yes. So I formed the Housing Crisis Ad Hoc Committee, and in doing so, we interviewed so many different stakeholders in the housing crisis. And one of the things that kept coming up as a suggestion was rent stabilization. And these were from different groups, either they were property owners or organizations that are specifically helping with the housing crisis, and it was something that keeps getting recommended for something that we could implement to address the housing crisis here specifically. And as Mr. Cruz mentioned, the majority of the population in Santa Barbara are renters, and this is what they're asking for consistently when I'm knocking on doors. It's something when I ask, what would you like me to work on? They've stated, I need rent control because it's too much, or sorry, not rent control, but rent stabilization. So as being a public servant, as being an elected representative, I'm here to do the will of the people, and that's what the will, that's what the people are asking for. So I'm here to fight for it as far as I can on the dais, and hopefully, we can make something happen as a result of the ad hoc committee that we formed to address all the other issues as well.
Thank you. I think that covers the panel for this question. Good. The next question, I would start with Ms. Santa Maria and go to Mr. Cruz, then Ms. Gutierrez, and then Mr. Gutierrez and Mr. Becerra.
Becerra.
I'm making, Becerra.
Becerra.
I'm from Philadelphia, and we have a problem with soft dishes.
Do a wah.
The next question is about jobs in business. What can the city and your district do to help existing businesses and attract non-polluting businesses that produce useful goods and services and generate good jobs, also with a view to helping small business people?
Great question. Thank you so much for that. So there's, there's two components to that. So how do we help our existing businesses, and then how do we bring in new non-polluting businesses? In helping our small businesses, one of the things I've heard over and over is the issue that keeps getting brought up with street vendors. There are a lot of mixed feelings about them, but in general, you know, some folks like them, but they, you know, we can't overlook that there are health and safety concerns, that there are very bad potentials for them to take away business from the established businesses that are there, brick and mortar, are paying taxes. I would love to work with our city to implement different micro-business zones in the city in which we can facilitate the start and flourishing of local businesses in an area that it's not affecting the other businesses. Because I don't, I don't necessarily want to stifle entrepreneurship in our city. I think there's a lot of folks here who have great ideas, and if the city were to support them, we could stimulate our local economy in a sustainable way. But we have to make sure that it's not affecting our, our local established businesses. Now, as far as creating new jobs, we really need to make sure that we are putting efforts and resources into renewable energies. We have, there is great promise in potentially starting microgrids in city neighborhoods to improve resilience against power outages, and many other... to improve resilience against power outages and many other green initiatives that would bring jobs and clean energy to our city.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz is next.
Thank you. This comes, sentence comes from the balance statement that I have previously said in my past six elections. It hasn't changed. My candidacy and community's focus is to advance the economic and social revitalization of our Milpus and downtown precincts. Part of that is creating services. In the previous ballot elections, how do we improve the Milpus corridor through economic development? Well, what we need is a property and business improvement district under Streets and Highways Code, Section 36, 614.5. This business improvement district has been neglected by our incumbent, has been neglected by the whole city council, has been neglected by the previous city council. And so the business owners are asking for that. We need an improvement district in the Milpus corridor. The streets are unpaved. It's the worst paved street in the city. That cannot happen to generate revenue and attract businesses. Work with the businesses through this improvement district to facilitate improvements, to bring consumers to buy from the businesses.
Thank you. Ms. Gutierrez is next.
Thank you. I'm actually really excited to answer this question. One of my achievements has been to be able to support our local businesses in the area. Growing up in in the city, our local businesses are the ones that actually give back to our community, especially to the schools. And so one of my big priorities was to invest resources on Milpus since it has been an area that has been neglected for for many years. And just to give my opponents here a little bit of feedback, there was a, an association on Milpus to support local businesses, but due to political issues that came up and outside voices, that created a huge division and scars even on the local businesses. And so this is why you, and currently, we don't have a business organization on Milpus because there was politically, some business owners that have been there for generations were politically attacked. And so one of my goals have, it's been more to show the local business owners that I I'm not about just promises but actions. And so what is necessary for Milpus is to actually create it a safer place where people can walk safe. And I'm proud to announce that the city more than, since I started on council, has invested a lot of resources and money to Milpus. We're going to have new sidewalks, safer crossings on Milpus. I was, I was very instrumental to create the Funk Zone Association with the business owners there as well.
Thank you. You're next.
Thank you. Since elected, I've been very active with our Chamber of Commerce and other business-related organizations like the Downtown Business, or Downtown Santa Barbara Organization, the Food and Beverage Committee. And I hear from them what the needs of the businesses are, and I've been supportive in in making sure that they get those needs met ever since I was elected. And during the pandemic, I helped out the businesses by obviously allowing them to operate outside. I even shot some free commercials for them so that they could use to advertise their business during the pandemic and was supportive of hiring a economic, economic.
Development.
Development Director for the city. Thank you, Mr. Cruz. And I'm willing to even do more and 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 partner in in contract with the Chamber of Commerce to further help out our local businesses because obviously, that's the lifeblood of the community. It's where most of the people are are employed by. And yeah, I've I've been 100% pro-business and willing to do that moving forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, as a business owner for 33 years, I can see where where the city falls short. And I know that I've talked to many business owners. Matter of fact, I was endorsed by the South Coast Chamber of Commerce because of my ideas and my views. And so I take, I don't take that lightly. I I know that one of the biggest complaints is the red tape. You know, you want to bring a business into town, you want to develop, you know, have a plan, and you run into red plate, red tape all the time. I even have a neighbor who's trying to start, you know, he started off as fixing washers and dryers. Next thing you know, he's, the city's coming down on him, and they're telling him to tear down this and tear down that, but they won't give him a permit. And next thing you know, you know, he's getting fined for not tearing it down without a permit, and then they want him to build a new one, and they haven't issued the permit. So it's, you know, it's the process. So we have to look at a better way to streamline new businesses coming in, promote local, local ownership, not bringing in the corporate, but, you know, trying to push and and focus on on helping people get started. I've helped multiple people start businesses in town, you know, by just having great ideas and great conversations with them, and I want to continue to do that. And I know that's been always my my calling is to be a helper and to be able to bring ideas and people together and and resources. So that's where I'm at with that. I think that the city with a combination of working with with the chamber and with local businessmen that have been in it for a while, they can find solutions for this problem.
Thank you. Our next question, and the timer really doesn't like me, I think. The next question, and we will start, I think we'll start with Mr. Pachara. Basera.
Basera. Thank you, sir.
Stuck in my head. Mr. Basera. Mr. Gutierrez, then Mr. Cruz, Ms. Santa Maria, Ms. Gutierrez. So this question is about crime and police. How do you view the relation between the Santa Barbara Police Department and the community in your district? What would make things better?
Well, I think one of the biggest things, growing up, and I grew up on the mesa, I grew up, I went to McKinley School, which is in my district. You know, one of the best things about, you know, growing up there is that the officers were local, you know, so we got to feel these relationships. A lot of the guys that are retiring officers, you know, they were friends of mine growing up, you know, because they thought it was a great thing to do, to serve. And I think over the years, especially the last, you know, eight, nine years, a lot of our law enforcement's been vilified, you know, and I don't know why that's happening because Santa Barbara, as as was stated in the earlier debate, has the lowest incidents of bad, bad incidents with officer involvement. And I think we, so we need to support our law enforcement community. We need to support them, you know, to have housing locally, be able to be part of the community like they once were. I had a cross-street neighbor who also was my tutor to help me get a, get back into to my, back to school level, but her brother was a police officer, and he used to just come over and and just would open the car and everybody have a part of it, and you felt like you were, he was with you. And and so I think as we develop these opportunities with, you know, power programs, funding them, making sure that there's good relationships between the community and our police, I think that's where we need to be and also give that police officers what they need to be the best at their job. And if that means making sure that the funding is good, making sure that we're we're investing in them so that, you know, they they can do their job. And I think that's the best type of support we can give them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, fully believe that our law enforcement need to be backed up. I voted consistently to make sure that they get pay increases, made sure that our Chief of Police felt supported by the council, and and luckily, we were able to hire a new one that is really knocking it out of the park, really proud of her and what she's been able to do. She she was able to bring us her her station to be fully staffed, and we've been going to the graduation ceremonies and see that there's a lot more local Latinos being hired as law enforcement because it it really makes a difference when it's community policing and the community just grows to appreciate, respect, and admire our law enforcement as opposed to fearing them. And when we strengthened our Police and Fire Commission, a lot of the demands that were being brought to us by the community, we were pleasantly surprised that the Police Department had already implemented them. Like, there are already things that they're already practicing or not practicing. So it was a really proud moment to know that we have a police force that is essentially a trendsetter and leading the way for the rest of the country on what an effective and and appreciated police force can be and should be.
Thank you. I believe. Grecy, Agar. I think Ms. Santa Maria was next.
Oh, was it?
I believe so.
Okay.
I think that's right.
That, we can work on that.
It works.
Can you repeat the question one more time, please?
You want me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Sure. How do you view the relationship between Santa Barbara Police Department and the community in your district, and what would make things better?
Thank you for repeating that. The relationship with our police and the community is slowly getting better, but I do think there there's plenty of more work to be done. I think when it comes to, like Mr. Gutierrez mentioned, community policing is definitely a step in the right direction, but we also need to make sure that the other first, the other components of our first response teams are well-equipped so as to not always have to put so much work on our police officers. When our police officers have to be the ones deployed for every single issue that is creating a strain on our police department, and we want to make sure that they are, that they are doing what what they take a oath for, right, to protect and to serve. And so there are instances, for example, at mental health calls, those are often, you know, the police will will respond, but I want to work more with our city to to put more resources into our mental, mental crisis response teams. So that's, that's one thing. But I also want to make sure that we are giving a voice to local community groups most impacted by police brutality because even though we have better numbers in Santa Barbara, it's still not zero. And my goal is for us to eradicate any, you know, issues and and the strain between our police department and the community. I want our community to feel safe when they see the police come around. And I think that that starts by giving a voice to those marginalized, especially groups like Healing Justice. Thanks.
I believe Mr. Cruz is next.
Thank you. The relationship that the Santa Barbara Police Department has with the city is golden. They just recently, with the incumbent as the Finance Chair, got into a 30-year commitment of $103 million for the new police department that's going to replace where the farmer's market is at. $103 million with no architectural blueprint, no EIR studies, no data behind it, just a blank check. By the end of the project, I guarantee you, this project will cost $200, $200 million. They deserve it. Again, the police department is understaffed based on what Ms. Chief Kelly Gordon told me in council chambers. Again, I want to thank the police department for uprooting a problem that happened on the junior high, Delegara Street. In the Delegara Street, there was oversized vehicles that was creating a public nuisance, health risks, and there was some criminal illegal activity. We want to thank the club, Mark Arburado, and all the city staff that created a solution for that problem that no longer exists there now. What can happen is that we have to give the incentive for immediate community policing. There's no B coordinators. If there's no B coordinators, how are we going to have rapport with the community? So that's first thing to implement. Again, good, good community policing deserves respect, dignity for all Santa Barbians under the law. No harassment.
Thank you.
Oh, watch out. You're all right, you're all right. He's all right, everybody. He's all right.
Let's finish this question, and then we should probably go to closing statements because we're, time contains. But Ms. Gutierrez.
Thank you. I have, on the four years and a half, I've addressed the issue of having a better rapport within our district constituents and the police department. I've been a huge advocate about creating community policing, and I'm very proud that now we have a department that has definitely achieved those goals for being a fully department filled with newly officers. And I'm proud to say that some of the last academy that graduated, I had a former student who I mentored and now became a police officer. One of my first roles in the district was to, I was appointed by the Chief of Police to be the person that I would be in charge of the high school students that were gang affiliated or on probation, to make sure that they would graduate high school. And so early, early on, and even my experience as growing up in the city of Santa Barbara, we did have those police officers that lived in the neighborhood that were coaches, and then slowly, that started to change. And officers were no longer living in the neighborhood, and you saw the dynamics changing within the community. But so I, firsthand, I understand the importance of building a relationship with community and police. And I, during my time, especially during COVID, a lot of police officers were coming straight from the academy, and because during COVID, we had the narrative that went out there about defunding the police. And in my district, it's, people won't come up and say that we need more police officers because of the history that's been in that district, but they, we do. We need to be able to have safer streets. We need our police, our police department, and we have now the Citizens Academy now in our district that, and I will be proud to say that one of the most influential community policing is my uncle, Adrian Gutierrez, and he is an example of a police officer that was born and raised here and that is still centralized in that community.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we basically had time to attack our closing statements. Let's have our closing statements, and I will start with Mr. Basera, then Mr. Oscar Gutierrez, Ms. Alexandra Gutierrez, Ms. Santa Maria, and Mr. Cruz, you have cleanup.
Thank you.
Mr. Basera.
All right. So again, I'm running for a need in our community. I know Mr. Cruz said that his streets on Milpus were some of the worst streets in Santa Barbara. I beg to differ with you. If you look at San Andres right in front of my my business, it's the worst. It's uneven pavement. It's just ridiculous. After my last debate, somebody fell right in front of Food Land off off on the sidewalk because the bricks were sticking up. I mean, these are real things that are happening on the daily around there. So I'm standing up for my community. I'm standing up for my neighborhood, you know, where I live. I believe that the voice, we need to have a voice, and it needs to be a community voice. Our district happens to be the lowest voter turnout of all the six districts. So I'm rallying for them to come together, to be the voice, to be a strong voice so that we can push together to have these changes made for our community, for our youth, safer crosswalks. Some of the the crosswalks on on San Andres are just horrible. They're blind crossbox, uh, crosswalks, and I'm going to fight for better crosswalks. So it's not rocket science. It's basic, you know, fundamental visual things that you see on the daily, and they need to be taken care of. They need to be addressed, and I'm going to be the person that addresses that for our community. So a vote for Tony Basera is going to be a vote for for you, for you and the community to push forward, to to give us the opportunity, hopefully, down the line for 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 possibly equity and having a place to live, not just renting, but, you know, we need to take care of our our locals and now then the opportunity to live in Santa Barbara and grow old here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you. As I said earlier, me being on council, I've made history, and if reelected, I will continue to make the history. I agree that the West Side needs more attention, and that's all I've been fighting for since I've been elected. And as I said, the upgrades that are coming, they, they're already planned. They're they're planned, like literally next week, the city is going to redo the sidewalks on San Andres. And this is something I've said for years, that this isn't like ordering a pizza, it's not going to show up to your door in 30 minutes. It's going to take a while because it has to be planned out. So if you want to know all the other upgrades that are going to be coming to the community, to the West Side specifically, don't even take it from me. I'll I'll get you in contact with the department heads themselves, and they can explain you the process. It's not about a lack of trying. There's a process to how all this stuff is getting addressed, and I will continue to make sure it's getting addressed. And I will make sure that you are, have access to me whenever you can, whenever you like, and I will keep on fighting the fights that you want me to fight because that's what I'm here for, born and raised, and yeah, proud to be a West Sider. Thank you. Thank you.
I can't remember who I said first.
One, two, three.
That's what I thought. Go ahead.
Save the best for last.
I'm running for reelection because I want to finish the work that I've started. I have a proven record in my community of actually taking actions and not just promises that fade in the air. I've created, definitely given a voice to my district that has never I've created, definitely given a voice to my district that has never had before with, again, the resources that have been poured into that district for the last four years and a half, creating a stronger Police Department in the area of community policing. During COVID, I was out there in the trenches. I've always been very present when it has to do with creating policy that goes against what's, what's popular. I, during COVID, I was out there passing food from, working with nonprofits like the Food Bank, opening the first educational pods in the city, and bringing in community together. In order to solve problems, I will continue to, to fight for our community values. I will continue fighting for policies that are going to stand the test of time. But most importantly, I'm not just going to focus on the issues that we have today. I have to focus on the issues that are going to be coming in the future, because we have a younger generation. We have children's and youth that we have to think about. And I need to continue being that voice of the people instead of political preferences. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Santa Maria.
In my race for city council, I walked the streets of my neighborhood for six days a week. And before I started this campaign, I had been walking these streets either way, past, you know, sharing information on know your rights for tenants, know your rights as, as workers, how do you organize against the powers that be that are keeping our working families living paycheck to paycheck, forcing families out of our community and thereby crumbling the fabric of the city. In my role as a community organizer, as a, my day job as a union rep, as in every capacity that I've had, I've spent the last almost decade working with city staff, with current city council members, and, and wanting to move progress for our city forward. Because this is a position that cannot be taken for granted. This is a, well, it used to be five, now it's a four-year position. And this isn't a position you only show up for six months before reelection. We see that from many, many politicians, and our families can no longer afford somebody that is absent from key decisions. We need to be able to bring the community in. And when you vote for me to be your next city council member, you're voting for all of your voices to be in there. Because the same way that everything I've been advocating for has been a collective effort, everything that I vote for, I can guarantee you will be encompassed from all of the various voices and stakeholders. And at the end of the day, I would be proud to have your, your, your vote, and you can go on votewendysantamaria.org to see all of the endorsements and the community support that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Cruz.
Yes. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much to the organizers of this forum. My name is Crusito Herrera Cruz. I was born in this community. I come from Trinidad and Bucayz Cruz, a Yaki indigenous man from Arizona. My mom, Marcelina Herrera, a Mexica Nawa. So I'm indigenous, but I'm Americano Chicano. By being an Americano Chicano, I have the privilege to come back to how we started as a constitutionalist. I've defended the Constitution when it was required, when no one believed in district-based elections. What's important in this community is the League of Women Voters bar graph. The blue is represented the fifth cycle, the red is the sixth cycle housing element. There is such a housing crisis in Santa Barbara that no one's attending to and no one's really talking about. The Housing Authority of City of Santa Barbara has a five-year plan. I met with the executive director, there's already a 5,000 waiting list, and there's 4,500 already waiting just to get on the waiting list. So looking at the dynamics in Santa Barbara, it's interesting how the Democratic Party is nonpartisan, but it has influences. It seems like it's the same picture that I'm holding up, but it's the two candidates. One picture is of 2019, and one's a picture of 2024. Exactly the same cultural appropriation that this partisan group has, and it has influenced the way that the narrative has gone. Why? Ask your question, why isn't Crusito in the newspapers, in the Independent, in the news hawk? So by cleaning it up, we have to clean up our democracy, because it's unfair, it's undemocratic, it's un-American. And vote for Crusito Herrera Cruz will get you a fighter at city hall for all of Santa Barbara and all the districts, because we need district-based elections. I should cut it off.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's have a round, that's it. Let's have a round of applause for our candidates. Again, thank you for participating. Gracias.
You're welcome. Denada.
Hey, Denada, right. Thanks to TVSB, Sylvia Uribe for translation, CEC for the facilities, and all the volunteers for the League of Women Voters who helped with this forum. And please make sure you are correctly registered to vote and vote. Your registration must be postmarked or submitted electronically by October 21st, 2024. I believe that's correct. Please make sure you're registered at the correct address, really. Your vote matters. Please register, and please drive safely. Good evening.